Can you get John? Good evening. The San Dimas City Council meeting for Tuesday, May 13th will come to order. Please rise. Repeat after me. I pledge a li— excuse me.
To the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, as we're getting comfortable, Mayor, I would like to make a motion to excuse Councilmember Nacano's absence. He is working far away today, and it was unavoidable, and he could not be here.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries four zero. Madam Clerk, would you have a roll call, please?
Here.
Councilmember Vienna.
Oh, here.
Councilmember Burtakos.
Here.
Councilmember Weber.
Here.
Mayor Bedar.
Here.
Record will reflect the council does have a quorum.
Thank you. First off, we'll have a presentation from the Sewer Maintenance District. And I won't say what it's about.
There he is.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, city staff, and residents of San Dimas. My name is Andrew Ngumba, and I'm the division chief in charge of Sewer Maintenance Division for Los Angeles County Public Works. Thank you very much for having us here this evening to be able to talk to you about the proposed sewer service charge increase in the district. So just as an overview, I will discuss the consolidated Sewer Maintenance District. For those who may not be familiar, we'll talk about the services we provide for the city's sewer system. We'll talk about financials, including the proposed rate increase. And then we'll talk about the engagement we're going to do as part of this process. So for those who may not be familiar, the consolidated Sewer Maintenance District is a financing district whose purpose is to collect sewer service charges for the operation and maintenance of sewer systems in the incorporated county and 38 member cities. We service more than 500,000 parcels throughout LA County. We have more than 2 million customers that we service. We also have four wastewater treatment plants that we service through special service zones. And we have Edison pump stations and more than 4,600 miles of sewer lines. So that just shows the six service areas that we cover throughout the whole county. The city of San Dimas is in our east service area. And just for an understanding of the infrastructure that I'm talking about that we maintain, we maintain what is called the local main sewer line. This is the sewer line that you see in the street. The land that goes from the local main sewer line to the properties, also called the house service laterals, that is the property owner's responsibility. Our system is called the collection system, and what it does is it collects wastewater from all properties, and we convey it to larger sewer lines, also called trunk lines. These trunk lines are mostly owned by the sanitation district, and they deliver that to the treatment plants for treatment and disposal. Obviously, it goes without saying that municipal sewer systems make our modern way of life possible. In addition, they do protect public health, they ensure environmental protection, but even importantly, they do allow our cities to grow in a sustainable and resilient manner. So their proper care and maintenance is highly critical for these systems. The services we provide can be grouped into three main categories. The biggest category is preventative maintenance. This is things like regular cleanings of the sewer lines. We address requests, you know, for noisy manholes, orders, pests, things like that. We also provide compliance with regulations for the city as well. We televise the sewer lines on a regular basis to assess their condition, and from those assessments, we make recommendations for repair. And for repair of sewer lines, we also repair pump stations. And then we also offer 24-hour emergency response. This would be to address sewer line stoppages, backups, and overflows. And then, of course, any pump station malfunctions, we would address also through our 24-hour emergency response. So specifically in the city, you have about 9,500 parcels, which corresponds to about 13,200 sewage units. A sewage unit is the basis upon which the sewer service charge is levied. So for example, a single sewage unit is equivalent to a single family home. The infrastructure in the city is more than 500,000 feet of sewer lines, about 2,400 manholes, and seven pump stations. Regular maintenance in the city includes periodic cleaning and as a cleaning of the sewer lines. We do inspect each manhole twice per year. We inspect all the seven pump stations twice per week, and then, of course, we do any repairs when we find deficiencies in the system. It is important to note that although the district operates and maintains the sewer system, the city still remains the owner, and they do have some responsibilities to the system as the owner of the system. About 95% of the city's sewer lines are free of significant structural defects. Of the 5% that were found to have significant structural defects, the most critical ones have already been addressed. The rest have been placed on a priority list, and they are also on an enhanced maintenance schedule until you can actually address them. We expect it's going to take about 2.4 million to address the deficiencies on the sewer line, and we also need to replace the pipes coming out of the San Dimas pump station at a cost of about four and a half million. The last time we increased sewer rates in the district was 2014. So what that means is that we've had the same sewer service charge for the last 11 years. That has led to stagnant revenues while the cost of operation and maintenance has increased substantially. Labor has gone up alone, labor alone has gone up more than 60% in the last 10 years. Construction costs, material costs, all have gone up, and we're finding ourselves in a position where the revenue we collect is less than the expenditures we have in the district. And what you see on the right there is a snapshot of the finances in the district. The blue line represents the revenues. The brown line represents expenditures, and the dashed red line represents reserves, which we also call our fund balance. And as you can see, we have been operating at a deficit for a few years now, and our reserves are declining. We expect to actually go into the negative at the end of the next fiscal year. The bulk of the expenditures in the district are used for preventative maintenance, condition assessment, and repair. Just those two categories take up about 90% of the expenditures. Another 5% is for emergency response and 5% for administration costs. Public Works hired an independent consultant to evaluate the district's finances and recommend a sustainable level of revenue for the district. The result of that evaluation was a rate study, which has been shared with the city. And as a result of that study, we are proposing to increase the current $50 per sewage unit per year sewer service charge by $14 per year for three consecutive years, and then by the rate of inflation for another two years. What we're looking at after about five years is about $45. So for a single-family home that currently pays about $50 per year for their sewer services, they will be paying about $96 after five years. Multi-family units pay multiples of the sewer service charge based on the number of units, and commercial properties also pay multiples of the sewer service charge based on the land use per county code. Most residents in LA County actually pay two fees for their sewer services. They will pay a collection charge to either the Sewer Maintenance District or the cities that's shown in blue on the graph there, and they'll also pay a treatment and disposal cost, mostly to the sanitation district, and that's shown in red. Just looking at some of the jurisdictions around, you can see the collection charge for the district is quite low in comparison. The green, that city of Burbank, they actually do their, they have their own wastewater treatment plant, so they bill for both collection and treatment. And even after we increase the rates, we do expect to be one of the lowest rates in the region for collection, and we also anticipate that other jurisdictions going through similar financial conditions might be increasing the rates as well. Proposition 218 is a law that requires governmental agencies to follow certain steps anytime they propose a rate increase for property-based fees like a sewer fee. The basic essence of Prop 218 is we have to notify all the property owners that are affected. We have to provide them and explain to them the means of protesting the increase, and then inform them about any public hearing where the increases are going to be considered. We are going above and beyond Prop 218 requirements. We are engaging with the community. We have, we are collaborating with community-based organizations to co-create education materials, are using their channels to communicate to their constituents, and they're also helping us with our multilingual support. And the goal here is just to make sure that our customers understand the sewer services they receive, they understand why we have a proposed rate increase and why it's actually happening at this moment. Looking at timeline, we did finalize our rate study in January of this year, and beginning in March, we began our engagement and outreach by conducting presentations, going to community events. At the beginning of this month, we sent out Prop 218 notices to all the customers in the district, all your city residents should have received them. And the notices have information about the open houses, events, and webinars, which would be an opportunity for them to engage with Public Works. And it also has the public hearing date of June 24th, where the board of supervisors will consider the rate increases. And in accordance with Proposition 218, if there is no majority protest to the rate increase, they would approve the rate increases to become effective in July of 2025. These charges are collected on property taxes, so customers would see these new rates in the next fiscal year's property tax. So the notice that was sent looks very similar to the one that's up on the screen there. It has the required Prop 218 information. It talks about the services we provide. It talks about the process to protest, how to contact us, to ask questions, or any concerns. And then it also has links to resources, so if you need, like the notice in a different language, you can find that on our website. We honestly continue, we hope to continue collaborating with the city to provide a high-level service to the city when it comes to sewer services. We have contact information where people can reach us if they have any questions or concern. The number there actually has multilingual support for different languages. And then, of course, we do offer 24 emergency response for any sewer-related concerns, and that's the number you can actually reach us on. That is my presentation. Happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Questions?
I just have one question. First of all, thank you for the presentation. It was, we have a number of presentations where people come in and talk about rate increases, and nobody likes them, but we appreciate you being here, and your transparency is appreciated, for sure. I'm kind of curious, being that the city owns the sewer infrastructure, I don't know if you're the right person to ask this question, but about what is the average age of our sewage infrastructure in the city? Do you have any guesses?
It's kind of, it's a mixed bag, but on average, it is newer than most of what we have in the district.
Okay.
Yeah. If you want, if you want an exact number, I can look it up, and we can get back to you.
That works for me. Thank you.
Any further questions?
What would constitute an emergency that you guys would respond to that maybe the city would not, I guess?
The most common one is a sewage overflow. So if there is sewer line blocked by either fats, oils, and grease, or rags, or roots, and sewage is spilling out of manholes, we respond to that kind of thing. City has seven, has seven pump stations, and sometimes there is power outages for different reasons, like, you know, Edison has safety, power safety, shut-off, and not all of them actually have an emergency generator. So we do have some time. We have to get to the pump station and put the pump station on a generator before any kind of issue would happen.
And then just the only time that I've ever had any issues or received phone calls about the sewers, and I think the city responded to these, but I'm just curious if it would be in your wheelhouse, is cockroaches, like apocalyptic, insane infestations of roaches coming out of the sewer. And I mean, to the point where, I mean, there's videos that people sent me, and right now it's, it would be the sewer system down by the Gold Line or the A Line Station, but is that something that, I don't want to know if it's common, I've learned a lot more about roaches than I ever cared to know after learning about this, but I mean, is that something that you guys deal with, with those types of issues?
Yes, that is something that we do address. We do address any kind of pests. And you are right, cockroaches, or at least some level of cockroaches are going to be present in most sewer systems, but anything, you know, that you're describing is something that we can actually apply some mitigation measures to.
So like a situation where residents, you know, like I understand, like especially as the climate changes a little bit during the seasons, you know, sometimes they'll see them come up through their drains and stuff like that, but there's been circumstances where, I mean, sewer man, like the manholes, they're just literally coming out everywhere. Those would be a situation that would be appropriate then to reach out to you?
Exactly. Definitely let us know. We would address that kind of situation.
Thank you.
I do have a question. So I see the way in which the rate increase is formatted gives people a chance to adjust over those years, but essentially it is doubling the rate. Do you offer any low-income assistance or senior citizen assistance for people that may have trouble with this increase?
We don't have any programs at the moment, and part of the reason is that we can only charge the cost of providing the service, and the cost of service is divided equally amongst all the people receiving the service. We don't have any extra revenue to provide subsidies. That said, we do look for opportunities and grants and things like that that we can use to offset if, say, people are having a difficult time with paying fees. During COVID, there were some grants available, and we were actually able to get some funding and forgive people who didn't pay their fees during the pandemic years.
Okay. Thank you.
My question is pretty simple. Are sewer lines going from our home out to the middle of the street? How often is that main sewer line in the middle of our streets cleaned out? Because as in our community, we have a pretty severe problem with roots growing within the sewer line, which creates blockages. How often does that get cleaned out?
So there's, we have two kinds of sewer line cleanings. We have as-needed cleaning, where after an inspection, we determine that we need to clean a segment of sewer line. And we have periodic cleanings, where if we know a segment of line is problematic, like for example, one that has a lot of road problems, that's going to be put on a periodic cleaning schedule. So we'll come either there 30, 60, 90 days and clean the sewer line. So if, for example, you're on your street, when you have a lot of roots and you're having any problems with sewer line, that is one we'd put on a regular periodic cleaning schedule just to address those.
Okay. And sanitation handle that, not cities or city public?
That would be the district that would handle that, yes. That's our responsibility.
And the process would be go through our Public Works people to notify you, or how would that work?
That's definitely one way, but if, as a resident, you see any concerns at all of the sewer line, you can call us directly, and we'll come out and address it. So, and the number we put up there on the screen, the overflow helpline, that's the number you'd want to call. But again, if you also know, if you know of segments that maybe are problematic and we're not really addressing right now, you can let your director, and she'll pass it on to us.
Thank you. Any further questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your time.
And as everybody here knows, that's the reason why I didn't tell you why this presentation was going to be about. I'd rather him tell you that you're going to raise your rates.
I was surprised they all came for me, huh?
Yeah, they all came for you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, sir. Thanks for the job you guys do. It does my heart good to hear people clapping for an increase. Today, we have a couple of recognitions. One is, we'd like to recognize the San Dimas High School Water Polo Team. Jay Jones.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members, and members of the community. It's my great honor to stand before you today to recognize a group of exceptional young individuals, our San Dimas High School athletes and competitors, who have demonstrated outstanding dedication, perseverance, and sportsmanship over the course of this year. These students not only excelled in the pool, but they also represent the best of our community through their hard work, teamwork, and commitment to excellence, both in athletics and academics. Tonight, we take a moment to celebrate their achievements, to honor their coaches and families who support them, and to show our appreciation for the pride they bring to our city. At this time, I would like to have Assistant Principal of Academic Success in Athletics, Jack Nance, join me in welcoming and congratulating these remarkable student-athletes.
Thank you, Jay. Mayor Bedar, City Council, thank you for having us and celebrating our kids. I've already assigned them an oral presentation on the sewage system in San Dimas, so we'll be hearing those tomorrow. I can't wait. This is a direct result of the partnership we have with you guys here at the city. These girls put many hours of practice at the recreation center down next to the high school, and this is our second CIF title for water polo that we are celebrating. So I'm going to tell you a little bit about these girls because this team went through some hard times, and we know that through hard times, champions are made. In December, one of these young ladies lost her father, a LA County firefighter, sorry, to a heart attack. And if you were at the CIF championship, you would saw about 50 to 70 firefighters lined up on our side of the pool, so the other team had no chance. This year, San Dimas High School Girls' Water Polo competed in the CI Southern Section Championships held at Mount SAC Aquatic Center. The girls came away with a CIF championship with a nine-to-two win over Troy High School. It was a dominating performance as the Saints outscored their opponents 39 to 21 in their run to the championship. The ability of Coach Jesse Johnston in bringing the team together after a slow start to the season was impressive. The girls never gave up, and they exemplified the Saint spirit. This is the third CIF championship for Coach Johnston, but the first CIF championship appearance for the Girls' Water Polo program. This team is a perfect picture of Saint grit and how a team can overcome previous disappointment to rebound and pursue a CIF title. It is great excitement that I also introduce the Division for CIF Coach of the Year Jesse Johnston and the CIF Player of the Year Junior Faith Kearns. So I will introduce the young ladies. As I read your name, make your way to the podium, and Jay will give you a certificate, and we're going to take a group picture with the mayor. First up, Matty Curtis. Isla Carver. Emerald Watson. Jade Allen. Izzy Santana. Bella Moore Queen. Bella Moore Queen. Carla Armely. Ava Mercado. Gabriella Bailey. Tessa Gomez. Nadia Adams. Faith Kearns. Chloe Perez. McKenna Lopez. Three-time CIF champion, Coach Jesse Johnston.
Anyone wishing to take pictures? Anyone wishing to take pictures, parents feel free to come up right here and take all you want. These guys are put on, stay awake.
20 minutes.
At this time, we'd like to recognize Older American Recognition Month. Madam Clerk, would you read the proclamation?
Whereas for the past 60 years, the month of May has been proclaimed throughout the country as Older Americans Recognition Month. And whereas the City of San Dimas recognizes that older adults are trailblazers advocating for themselves, their peers and their communities, paving the way for future generations. And whereas we appreciate the value of inclusion and support in helping older adults successfully contribute to and benefit from their communities. And whereas during the month of May, the City of San Dimas is celebrating the birthdays of those residents who this year have attained the age of 90 and older. And whereas Kathy Renshler, active volunteer in the City of San Dimas, has been selected to represent the city at the Los Angeles County Older American Recognition Celebration. And whereas the San Dimas Senior Citizens Club, the Bingo Committee and the Senior Citizens Commission are commended for their volunteer commitments and financial contributions for the betterment of the San Dimas Senior Citizen Community Center and the residents of San Dimas. Now therefore, I, Mayor Emmett G. Bedar, Mayor Protem Eric Nakano, Council Members Rachel Bertakos, Ryan A. Vienna and Eric Weber, do hereby proclaim May as Older Americans Month and urge every citizen to take time this month to recognize older adults and the people who serve and support them as powerful and vital citizens who greatly contribute to the community. In witness thereof, I, Mayor Emmett G. Bedar, have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of San Dimas to be affixed this 13th day of May, 2025.
Thank you. I'd like to have our Recreation Coordinator, Orlando Soto, please come up and to recognize his American honor.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council Members and Members of the community. Each month, each May, communities across L.A. County come together to celebrate Older Americans Month, a time to recognize the countless contributions older adults make to our society and to honor the wisdom, experience and dedication they continue to share all of us. This year, the Older American Month 2025, the City of San Dimas is proud to recognize Kathy Renshler as our Older American 2025. Kathy has exemplified a spirit of service, compassion and leadership in our community. Through her years of involvement and support of local programs, Kathy has enriched the lives of countless San Dimas residents. Her commitment to volunteerism, advocacy and lifting others truly represents the heart of this year's theme, flipping the script on aging. We thank Kathy for her outstanding contributions and celebrate her as a shining example of what it means to age with purpose and passion. Please join me in congratulating Kathy Renshler and honoring all older Americans who help make San Dimas a stronger, kinder and connected community. Thank you, Kathy.
Feel free to come up and take any photos you might want to.
Very nice. Thank you very much. It's such an honor.
Wait, wait.
Hold on.
Wait, wait, wait. Go, go, go. You could have done it for me.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to give the council the opportunity to say goodbye or hello to Commander Ash. The difference is I've never been able to pronounce his last name, so we're going to remain with the Commander Ash.
Mayor, Council Members, Community Members and City Staff, it's been an honor of a lifetime to serve as your station captain for the past five years and also as a station lieutenant for the past three years. So altogether eight years. I am deeply grateful for the trust, support, partnership you have extended to me and to all the men and women of the Sheriff's Department. As I prepare to take on this new role, I leave with great pride in what we have accomplished here together at San Dimas, enhancing public safety and community trust. Thank you for the privilege of serving this great city. I will always carry with me the relationships, experiences and most importantly, the friendships. I also want to thank all of our sworn and professional staff and also the city staff who have directly contributed to the service of our community members here in San Dimas. You will be in good hands with Lieutenant Serrano. He's a workaholic. He's not married, so he's got all the time to spend with the city. And I think he will be a great acting captain and he's willing to answer your phone calls 24 hours a day. So with that being said, you will be in good hands until you guys go through the process of selecting a new station captain. And I'm not going to say goodbye, I would say, see you later. Thank you very much and I appreciate all of you guys.
Thank you, Captain Ash. Why don't you just stay there because I'm quite sure at least, at least three of these people want to say something nice about you.
That's the first.
Rachel?
They're staring at me. It's my turn. Captain Ash, Commander Ash, Ash, thank you so much for your commitment to the City of San Dimas. We're going to miss you, but I'm confident that you're going to lead in your advanced position with the integrity and the commitment that you led San Dimas with. And I'm just grateful for the time that we had with you. And I know that the next person coming up has some big shoes to fill, but I'm looking forward to seeing how that goes and don't be a stranger.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Weber?
Well, the mayor was mighty presumptive when he said that we had good things to say, but it really is all good things. I really appreciate all of the, the years that we've spent working together and all of your hard work in the community. It definitely shows. I think we face some, some difficulties that impact all the cities along the foothill region and we've, we've worked through them the best that we can. And, and the Sheriff's Department has been a large part of that. So thank you for helping us through all of the challenges that cities have faced in the recent years. Commander's a, a big leap and I, I think that you're ready for it. Selfishly, I'd love to keep you, but I think the Sheriff's Department needs some good leaders in, in the upper management ranks and I know you're going to do well there. So thank you very much and we know where to find you because as far as I know, I don't think you're going anywhere. So I think you're still going to be a San Dimas community member and we'll see you around.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'm going to call on Councilman Vienna, who's in an awkward position because it appears that Commander Ash is going to be his direct supervisor. So you gotta really say something nice.
Boss. No, in all seriousness, sir, I will say this. You know, when you came and you followed Andy Berg, you know, it's, it's been unique, the honor that I've had to serve and the opportunity I've had to work with the station captains. And we had a really good relationship with Andy, but then when you came, we got to do a lot of things together. And I think during your tenure, we've seen a motor deputy realized in this city. We've realized improvements in traffic safety, which is a huge thing, including around the schools, working together with Flock and expanding the safety efforts there, our SAO team and all of their efforts, you know? And, and there's been good and then there's been the budgetary challenges that the cities confronted with on a number of different fronts, but never, ever has public safety been something that we've worried about. And you've, despite all of it, been steadfast in your leadership here. You know, as I've always said, I grew up here, this is my home and, you know, my parents live here. And so I've remained committed to seeing that and you have been committed to it as a resident, you've been committed to it as the captain of the station. I think the other thing, knowing the other side of it, I think that there's a delicate balance, you know, for a unit commander to be able to have. And it's been an honor to work with you and you've balanced our relationships well with the city staff and, and I've always appreciated that. And I think that when a captain takes a resident's perspective, when they approach some of our community challenges, I think we end up with a better outcome in a lot of times, at least as it relates to public safety. And you've always not, not been just empathetic, but you've been sympathetic and you care. And so I sincerely thank you for that. I will be at work tomorrow and on time and under budget, as they say. So the good news is you live out here and my station, as you know, is not in the way or on the way. But nevertheless, no, I look forward to continuing to work with you and I am grateful for your friendship and your partnership. And, and I think that in this dynamic and I think in the next dynamic, I think that we're just going to continue to do awesome things for the citizens that we all serve. So thank you, sir, and I look forward to it. Congratulations.
Appreciate that. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Over the past 13, 14, 17 years or so, I've had an opportunity to be at least involved in the last six captains in this division or the, you know, for the city. We've been very, very fortunate. When Ash came, he came after one of our captains, Andy Berg, decided to retire. Most of the time when a captain leaves, he's getting promoted like, like Ash is now getting promoted, but they got moved for one reason or another. We're fortunate, they normally stay three to four years. Ash has been around here for six plus because he was Andy Berg's Ops Lieutenant, much like Louis Serrano back there. He's, Berg will tell you that he couldn't be successful without an operations lieutenant who knew the job and continued to move forward and keep, you know, the ship afloat because they get called many, many times to downtown to talk about whatever they're going to talk about in these closed door meetings. But we're so fortunate that Andy, not only one lives, excuse me, Ash is a resident of San Dimas, his children go to our local schools, so it's a part of his heart, it's a part of his DNA. And we're very, very fortunate with that. I know that when Andy calls, it's not doom and gloom all the time. It's always something to do positive with the community or he's notifying, making a notification and we've had some notifications that none of us wanted to hear, but he, he delivers that message and it's always with professionalism. And it's, you know, better, you know, our bosses, sometimes our bosses don't think that we work or we respect them, but I can tell you, I've never met one deputy or one field person or any person in your office who didn't have the greatest admiration and respect for you. And I can tell you from this council right here, we respect you, we appreciate you and remember, I think you still owe me some lunches. And so the reality is, good luck. I know you're going to have a, no problem at all, but it will be a struggle trying to check on them.
Yeah.
And so, you know, let us know if you have a problem, we'll ask him to meet us somewhere.
Well, I know if I don't find him at work, I'll find him here on Tuesday night. So I'll give him a hard time up here, you know?
Well, that might be a maybe too.
Yeah. No, it's, you know, people say work is good, but if you go, if you go to work and you enjoy the people that you work with and you make friends, which I have in the past, almost seven years and 10 months, the first time I met everybody at the council was National Night Out, August 3rd, when we had the rolling neighborhood caravans. And we used to go from, you know, I met the mayor, I think you, I had you ride in my car. And from then on, I met the staff here who are great, community members, very supportive. So it's very, it's a great place to work. Whoever the next captain's going to be at the station, they're going to be very, very lucky because you have community support, you have city support, you have council support. And with that being said, everybody's invested in public safety, which will mean you will have a, a safe, safe, safe city, you know? That's why there's a lot of cops and firefighters that reside in San Dimas, because they do their homework and they know it's a safe place, right? But if you watch TV and, you know, listen to the internet, it's a different, it's a different story, but I think we all, we have to take, keep everything into perspective and we have a very good city. We have a great government at work here and you have great people that work and run the city. So I'm indebted to you guys. Thank you very much. But now when I come to the meetings, I'll be a civilian and I'll keep, I'll keep being involved to the best of my abilities and we'll see you guys later. Thank you.
Mayor, are we talking about his tax district later today? I just wanted to know.
I think we'll just stay away from that right now. All right, we'll move on to oral communications. Members of the audience are invited to address the City Council on any item on this agenda or not on this agenda. Public comment will not be taken during each individual item, agenda item except for the public hearing items. Comments on public hearing items will be heard when that item is scheduled for discussion. Under the provisions of the Brown Act, the legislature body is prohibited from engaging in discussions on any item not appearing on the posted agenda. However, your concerns may be referred to as staff or set for discussion at a later date. Each speaker will be limited to speaking once for up to three minutes. Madam Clerk, do we have any speaker cards?
Yes, Mayor, the first-
Yes, Mayor, the first speaker is Patricia Souza.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council. My name is Patricia Souza. Is that better?
Yes.
Okay. Does my three minutes start over again? Good evening, Mayor, and members of city council. My name is Patricia Souza. I've been a resident of Glenwood Townhomes for 45 years and currently serve on our board of directors. Tonight, I speak on behalf of our board and the 185 homeowners we represent. We are here to express our deep concern regarding current actions by the city code enforcement against our community. Let me begin by stating clearly, we fully support the mission of the code enforcement and the importance of maintaining city standards. However, we believe that the current process, particularly the use of anonymous complaints, has opened the door for misuse and retaliation. Unfortunately, this is precisely what has happened in our case. This has given the impression that the city is being used to police internal HOA disputes, effectively acting on behalf of disgruntled individuals. It raises an important question, is it appropriate for city code enforcement to be drawn into neighborhood politics instead of focusing on true public safety and code compliance? Not a single cited issue required city permits, many were minor repairs. Why is the city vetting repair complaints on Glenwood private property? We have a competent and responsive management company. These concerns pose no threat to public safety or legal liability to the city. The recent complaints submitted to the city included photos identical to the ones previously sent to our management company. These images lacked addresses, context, or location data. When our management team requested clarification, the complainant refused to cooperate. Instead, he began documenting all maintenance items throughout the community and submitted them directly to code enforcement to escalate a personal grievance. The result? The city is now perceived as being drawn into a private dispute, effectively used as a tool by one individual to pressure an entire community. This raises a fundamental question, is it appropriate for city code enforcement to intervene in HOA matters that pose no public risk and fall well within HOA's ability to manage internally? Furthermore, the code enforcement imposed a strict 30-day deadline for compliance. That's simply unrealistic for any HOA operating under budget constraints, vendor timelines, and seasonal work cycles. Communities like Glenwood work hard to maintain city standards. Do you want me to stop?
No, go ahead.
City standards while staying within our financial means. Sudden, unexpected compliance demands make that nearly impossible. At the same time, our HOA has been asking the city for years to resurface the city's public streets within Glenwood. These roads represent legitimate trip and fall hazards. We've been told to be patient. If the city expects residents to exercise patience due to budgetary constraints, that same understanding should be extended to its residents and HOAs, especially for those making good faith efforts to comply and cooperate. Why is there urgency when it comes to minor maintenance on private property but delay when it comes to serious city responsibilities on public structures? I'm going to skip down and say, we respectfully urge the city to review and revise its code enforcement policies. Let's restore the collaborative spirit between the city and its HOA communities. We all share the same goal.
All right, ma'am, thank you.
Safe, well-maintained neighborhoods.
Great. Thank you. Did you, have you given a copy of that to our city manager or assistant city manager? Could you do that, please? And ma'am, is there, and on this document, is there a way to reach you, a phone number to reach you? Okay, thank you. Next?
Next speaker is Marcella Campos.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, and city staff. My name is Marcella Campos, I am the current president of the Board of the Directors of Glenwood Townhomes. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you tonight and share our board concerns regarding ongoing issues with code enforcement. Over the past year, our board has submitted repeated reports to the city's code enforcement division concerning serious violations within our community, specifically an unlicensed business operating out of a resident's garage, and unpermitted electrical modifications associated with that business. These activities are not only clear violations of city code, but also introduce safety, legal, and liability risks for both our HOA and the city. Despite the gravity of these issues and the detailed evidence we provided, including documentation shared with the prior city manager and the full council, the city's response has been minimal. In one particularly troubling instance, a code enforcement officer offered the homeowner what can only be described as an informal agreement stating, and I quote, "If you don't advertise your business anywhere, I'll let you call it a hobby." This approach is unacceptable and raises concerns about the consistency and seriousness in which the enforcement is applied. As of May 7th, this business continues to operate in defiance of city code and HOA regulations. To further underscore our concern, I'll share a personal example. Recently, I received a call from code compliance officer John Villalobos, not in response to the multiple reports we submitted about the unlicensed business operation, but to follow up on a garage sale permit I had initiated. He was acting on an anonymous complaint that I had failed to complete the required permit. However, the anonymous complainant is in fact a known Glenwood resident, a retired sheriff, and former HOA board candidate who is unhappy about losing the last election. Instead of addressing the more serious concerns repeatedly raised by our board, Mr. Villalobos chose to act on the minor garage sale issue, sending me a formal and threatening email citing alleged vehicle code violations related to the sale. This situation is especially troubling, giving his favor to return multiple calls regarding the ongoing documented commercial activity and code violations that pose a far greater risk. This contrast in responsiveness sends a troubling message about enforcement priorities and raises valid questions about fairness and impartiality on how complaints are handled. Let me be clear, we're not asking for special treatment, we are asking for fair, consistent, and transparent enforcement of city codes, no more, no less. As our HOA is committed to responsible self-government, we ask that the city demonstrate the same commitment through equitable code enforcement and open communication. In closing, we respectfully urge the city to reassess its approach to HOA engagement in code enforcement. We believe collaboration, not retaliation, or selective enforcement should be the model. Thank you for your time and your continued service to our community.
Thank you, ma'am.
Next speaker is Kim Weatherby.
Good evening. My name is Kim Weatherby, and I am a public information officer with the Small Business Administration, Office of Disaster Recovery and Resilience. The SBA's goal is to ensure that the city council and the community of San Dimas is aware that disaster relief is available to them in the form of low-interest disaster loans. Businesses of any size, homeowners, renters, nonprofits, can apply for low-interest loans to replace or repair physical and personal property. I don't think you all were affected majorly by the Eaton or Palisades fires, but we offer also the Economic Injury Disaster Loan, which is for businesses that might have been affected. Again, I know you're not in the exact area, but I've come across just yesterday, a business, a mayor approached me from San Bernardino, and he just became aware of a company in his district that was providing all of the baked goods for one of the high schools that burned down, and so now they're realizing they're, you know, they're going to need some financial assistance. So, that's what this idle loan is specifically designed for. There are many benefits for a SBA loan, such as 0% interest and no payment for the first 12 months. So, if any of your community members, they might know of somebody also, may not even be here, but we're here for all of LA County. So, if anybody is interested, they can reach out to our website, which is sba.gov/disaster, and the 800 number, if they prefer to talk to somebody, is 800-659-2955. Thank you for your time.
Can I have a staff member meet up with her and get a business card from her, Sherry, please? Thank you, ma'am.
Next, the next speaker is Deana Malakoff.
Hi, everyone. Mayor, city council, all you guys, residents. I'm Deana Malakoff, I'm the interim, I'm the interim community library manager over at the San Dimas Library, and I just want to tell you about some of our upcoming events. Oh, before I get to that, though, if anybody knows of anybody that wants to volunteer at the San Dimas Library, we are looking for volunteers for the summer, because our summer discovery program starts in June, and for that, we have prizes that we give away to kids, we have a lot of paid performers that come into the library, and a lot of things that volunteers can do. So, if anybody's interested in volunteering, now's the time to come to the library and let us know, and they can volunteer for the summer. So, it's a good thing a lot of teenagers like to do that. Okay. Also, what we have is a regular Bark reading therapy dogs that's going to be coming up on May 17th, and this is a picture of Jax and Sammy, and they're there to... Kids are encouraged to read to the dogs, because sometimes they feel intimidated by reading to people, and so they feel nonjudgmental humming dogs is good, and that's a great program that we do, it looks like a couple of times a month. Also, what we do a couple of times a month is yarn and stitch. If any of you guys like to do, make things with yarn, like knitting or crocheting or embroidery, you can just come, you do bring your own supplies, and then have a nice, relaxing environment where you can guys chat and just kind of have fun doing, if anybody can come, beginners to experts. Also, having a book club coming up, My Brilliant Friend by Elena Ferrante, and that's Wednesday, June 4th at 10:30, and it's called the Book Party Book Club, and that's held on the first Wednesday of each month. So, if anybody's interested in coming to that, that's there. Also, for teens coming up on May 20th, in honor of Asian American Native Hawaiian Pacific Islander Month, they're going to be discussing the book Farewell to Manzanar, and that's for ages 13 to 18, and it's from 4:00 to 5:00 o'clock on May 20th. That's coming up. And then, some of our online, we have a lot of online programs, and one that is, that might be very interesting is our Trailblazers in Conversation, and that's on May 22nd at 6:00 PM, and it's Ruby Warrington, author of Sober Curious, and she'll be there talking in a conversation. So, thank you very much, and yeah, hope to see you guys at the library.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is the San Dimas High School students.
Looked like they were ready to go.
Good evening, Mayor Boudard and council members. First, we'd like to thank you for coming to our House of Reps meeting last week. We enjoyed having you there. Starting with the arts, Color Guard won their gold medal at the WGASC Championships. Color Guard also rang the bell at the quad last week for winning various accomplishing titles. Drama Department had their final performance with the 11th Annual Variety Show, Theater is My Sport, on May 21st through the 23rd in Cloud Nine Classroom on campus. Jazz Band also received a superior rating at the Route 66 Jazz Festival. This weekend, they'll be competing at the Riverside Community College, going for a superior sweep this year. Moving on to athletics, boys volleyball are undefeated Hacienda League champions. Girls swim are undefeated Hacienda League champions. Teams making CIF are our boys tennis, boys volleyball, girls and boys swim, boys golf, boys and girls track. Baseball and softball end this week to determine if they are going to CIF. Sophomore Jaclyn Chen is the CIF Division III diving champion, the first girls diving CIF champion in school history. Jaclyn rang the bell last week in our quad. Her score would have been the champion for all divisions, and she went into the state qualifying meet as number one seed. She qualified for the state diving meet in Fresno as the number one qualifier for the CIF Southern section, and competes May 15th. In terms of academics, San Dimas finished state testing with nearly 100% of students completing the exams. AP exams started this week, seniors will check out on May 30th, and seniors are gearing up for their SDCP presentations that will take place on May 21st, 22nd, and 23rd. They have been working so hard all year, these projects are ready to be finished, and this is one step closer to graduation. We are about to celebrate 633 students who earned a 3.5 or higher GPA last semester, and our culinary arts program went on to a competition in Maryland representing California and won. This is a huge accomplishment, and congrats to them. Finally, activities. Seniors Sedesha Narala just became the first female in San Dimas history to complete her Eagle Badge. The San Dimas community is so proud to have you as a saint. The juniors just recently announced our prom theme, which is Stars, Stories, and Silver Screens. Prom will be on May 24th in LA. Our classes just had our biggest event of the year, Clash, which was last Friday. Our theme this year was Five Nights at Freddy's, and we couldn't be, we couldn't have had more fun. Thank you for having us, and we will see you next school year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker, next speaker up is Gracie Banyas.
Hello, council members. My name is Gracie Banyas, and I'm a resident of Covina, and yes, I'm in the right location. The reason I'm here today is to address the future of the recreational center in San Dimas. I use the activities and the classes there at the center, and I would like to ask the city, before they go on any further and make a decision on what the building is going to be like in the future, if they could complete a community assessment and surveys prior to eliminating services provided. Most senior centers, I don't know if you're aware, have activities of the same services, and they're in the morning, and they close early in the afternoon, not evening, but in the afternoons, in the neighboring senior centers. There are very few senior centers that are open in the evening and early morning, yours is one of them. San Dimas has these classes at 6:00 PM going forward, and you have classes early in the morning as early as 7:00 AM. These classes are critical for senior citizens, it allows us to go to the doctor's appointments without missing our physical activity classes and all the other services you offer. With this being said, I ask that you consider doing an assessment and a survey before doing any elimination of the classes. Thank you.
The next speaker is Erica Jac... Erica.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Erica Hockes, I work for Pomona Valley Transportation Authority, I'm the senior program manager. We do the get-about service for the city of San Dimas, Claremont, Laverne, and Pomona. I am here today, unfortunately, to talk about some changes, proposed changes that might be coming. We are going to be having a public hearing, we're going to be having two of them, on the 20th, we're going to be having one in Pomona, the Paul O'Mara Center, and on 22nd at the Laverne Senior Center, Community Center. They're both going to be held at 11:00 AM, and we're just asking for people to come by and talk to us here about the proposed changes. Sorry, I'm nervous. And give us some comment feedback on the changes that are being proposed. Again, we're going to be having two, May 20th and May 22nd. May 20th will be at the Paul O'Mara Center in Pomona, and the 22nd in the city of Laverne at the Community Center. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, that was the last speaker card.
Anyone else wishing to speak to the council at this time? Or land? Orlando?
Good evening, once again, mayor, city council, members of the community. I want to introduce Sharon Payton, who is our senior club treasurer, who's going to give a quick recap on the senior club finances.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Sharon Payton, and I have the honor of being the treasurer for the San Dimas Senior Citizens Club. And since I'm last, I'm also very nervous, but I am going to give, present the club donations for, I'll give the, present the club donations for fiscal year 2024. The city of San Dimas Utilities and Special Events, $9,200. Hilltop Church Food Pantry, $1,800. Hope Partners Food Pantry, $2,000. YMCA, $1,000. MOW, San Dimas Laverne, $1,500. San Dimian Food Pantry, $1,000. San Dimas Heroes, $1,000. Rotary Foundation for Military Families, $1,000. San Dimas Sheriff Boosters, $500. San Dimas Retirement Center, $923. Chapel Hill High School, $750. Gladstone, Allen Avenue, Skull, Cho, Extra, and Long Hill Middle School. I just came here two years ago from Connecticut, so if I mispronounce anything, I apologize.
Good job.
$2,500. Railroad Museum, $500. San Dimas Historical Society, $250. McKinley Children's Home, $500. David and Margaret Home, $500. Gifts, $650. Adoptive Families for Holidays, $525. Unsheltered Seniors, $200. San Dimas Nature Center, $500. Scholarships, there were 19, $12,700. San Dimas Fire Station Number 64, $500. Total donations for 2024, $39,998. And we also donated 420-plus bags of food for the Hope Pantry and Hilltop Pantry. The senior club has 123 members in 2024. We had 86 members attend the holiday luncheon. We had 160 play bongo at our December fundraiser. A treasury community bingo averaged approximately 90 to 100 participants weekly. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
Good evening, mayor, council members and city staff. My name is Donald Taylor Stewart. I'm here with WM. I'm here just to give a brief reminder for our upcoming summer internship program. The applications will close this week. It essentially is a program where they'll be shadowing myself and undertaking the huge goal of helping our multifamily properties and businesses recycle, just for traditional recyclables, which is paper, plastic, and cardboard, but most importantly, food waste. So they'll be working on that with me, doing cold calls, and also shadowing other parts of our business, just so they can see whatever avenues may be applicable to them. So they are required to do a cover letter, the essay, and then also an interview with myself, which will be taking place next week. We're opening it up to San Dimas High School, but also any resident of San Dimas can apply as well. So if that's of interest to you, I'll be leaving my card with Lauren Marshall, so she can connect you with me. But yeah, that's it. Thank you guys so much.
And I assume that WM means Waste Management?
Yes, I'm not allowed to say that anymore, but yeah, Waste Management WM, that's who we are.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Anyone else wishing to speak to the council at this time? Sir?
Good evening, everybody. Thank you, city council and the staff, for allowing me to speak publicly to you. I have been a resident of San Dimas since before it was a city. I live at 1715 Gainesboro Road. I'm here tonight to talk about and ask for your input on how you represented the residents of this city in areas of utilities. I heard the presentation from the Public Works, and I have their statement with me. That was one of the things I wanted to say. When they increased, in two years, we will be paying 83% more than we're paying now. And there was no financial statement on the information that we were mailed. He presented more information here tonight and said there was a three-year deficit, but he didn't say how much that I could see from where I sat. Now, how much is the deficit? How much is the income? Without a financial statement, that is not transparency to me. It was one, you raised the point about how much that increase was, but it, as a senior citizen on fixed income, all these increases count. The main reason I'm here is the water. City uses water. They pay the bill. What was the position taken by the city when the rate increase was proposed for water? It came into effect February 25. I'm asking what you, I mean, he made a presentation to you about the increase proposal. I assume that the water people did too. And they sent you, you get a bill for water. What did you do about it?
Mayor, council, I don't think they did a presentation here, and I don't, I don't believe that the city took an official position on that increase.
Because there was a 69% increase in the service charge of water, and there was a lot of deception in the statement they sent out when they proposed the increase. They, they mentioned the average 5/8 inch meter will pay $4 increase. 68% for a 1-inch meter. I asked all my neighbors, none of them knew what their meter size was. I have a 1-inch size. So how did the city handle it? Didn't they, didn't they feel the pain of the water increase? Or did they do anything? I'm asking, I didn't hear any, I didn't hear any opposition to the rate increase here without really knowing what it was for. By the way, I'm happy with the fiscal spending of the city of San Dimas over all these years. So don't think that I'm blaming you for the increases. I'm just wondering what your position was to represent us, the residents?
Mayor, I'm, mayor and city council, I'm, we do appreciate the comments from the member of the public. And if the member of the public would like to contact staff or contact city council members outside of this meeting, then I'm sure that he can get a response and get answers to his questions. But this period of our city council meeting is meant for councilmen, for the members of the public to give comments to council about issues and not engage in a back and forth discussion. That can occur outside the meeting with staff or with individual council members. So we do appreciate his comments, but time is up.
Sir?
Thank you.
Okay, sir. Our Public Works Director is right in front of you. She's going to raise her hand, and she'll walk out with you and get your information right here. Okay. Anyone else wishing to speak to the council at this time? Ma'am?
Yes, I'm Janet Van Galen, and thank you for listening to all of us. I'm here about the rec center also. As a senior, we do use that, and one of the options is having the pool stay open, the building gone, or rescheduled to be somewhere else. But the rescheduling of having the pools being open is for San Dimas students only, and not for lessons for the children or lessons for even adults that need it at certain times. If the pool is to be open for the school, it should also be staying open for the seniors. And if the pool is being used, then there's going to be the showers and the changing rooms that are open also. The seniors should still have their exercise classes, their aerobics classes, and things to be used if the pool is to be, you know, kept open. Please don't exclude us for any reason besides maybe not having the time, when the time is already allotted to us at this time, of having the different classes and the scheduling going on. It could stay the same and still have all of us. There's a lot of places that we cannot go to, which are the gyms and everything that are overcrowded as they are. And some of the insurances don't pay for that also. So the rec center is a very important community asset to all of us, particularly the seniors that need it, as it was said before, early morning, evening, when it's able to be used. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, anyone else wishing to speak to the council at this time? Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent calendar. All items on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted with one motion unless a member of the city council requests a separate discussion.
Move approval.
Second.
Any, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, motion carries for zero. Will it be the end of the consent calendar? We're going to go to other business, a discussion and consideration of the Easter holiday parking restriction. Staff?
Yes, good evening, mayor, members of the city council. Historically, the city has always suspended parking, overnight parking enforcement during three holidays, which consist of the Easter, spring break holiday, Thanksgiving, and Christmas and New Year's. Typically, Easter and spring break land on the same week weekend, so it's never been an issue or confusion. However, this year, they were about three weeks apart. So Easter, Easter, spring break was observed by, when it unified the first week of April, and Easter was, I believe, April 20th. So they're about three weeks apart. And that caused some confusion to the community, because we've always suspended enforcement during both those times. We did suspend enforcement during the spring break and also Easter, Easter weekend. However, at the last council, council meeting, there was some questions regarding that, and we were directed to bring back a discussion to see, get some clarification from the council in regards to how they want to do it moving forward when situations like this, they land on separate weeks and weekends. So that's what the purpose of this discussion is tonight.
So I'll just say, I think that it is a good thing to go ahead and not charge for overnight parking during spring break and the holiday. I've got an eighth grader and a seventh grader, and this is the first time it's ever happened since my kids have been in school, so I can understand how it happened. Moving forward, I think it would be appropriate to just go ahead and not enforce the parking on the break and the holiday.
Yeah, I, I appreciate that you guys hopped to it during this item related to Easter, and we're having this discussion. I agree with my colleague that, you know, I received a number of complaints and calls from people because of the, I mean, frankly, the website said it was the, the moratorium was for spring break slash Easter. And so I had a few people send that to me, which created a lot of mixed messaging. I think the other part is, and as councils, as we've discussed in the past, is, you know, is trying to be consistent with some of our neighbors, so like Laverne and Glendora, for example. And I think that also created some confusion where people were seeing that going, oh, well, you know, everyone's doing, like the ones that have parking restrictions, a moratorium on this. What are you guys doing? And not that I'm saying we need to be the same, but in this particular instance, we traditionally have, in fact, had a moratorium during this time. So I, I agree. I think the intent when this was discussed was to, you know, make those times, you know, painless, if you will, for families when they have relatives from out of town, as well as family visiting. It's unfortunate those things split, but nevertheless, I do think it's important that we allow people to get together as much as possible. And I hope maybe it'll go back to the way it was, being consolidated in one week, but if not, I'm fine with, with the split.
I don't have anything to add, other than I'm in agreement. Well, I think while this is rare, it sounds like, maybe, I don't know, but it has the potential to happen again and create that same confusion, most likely. So if we could break those two out and look at those as two separate holidays for the moratorium purposes, I think that'd be a good thing.
Any further discussion? Do I have a motion?
I motion to approve the moratorium to cover the spring break and the Easter holiday, even if they are split.
Yeah, and I think the only thing I would offer before we vote on that, and I second that, is in terms of this year, is there, what happened with the fees? How were people cited? And how do we traditionally, and how do we traditionally do the moratorium? What does that frequently look like?
So when, ahead of time, but during those times when we are going to suspend enforcement, we, our overnight parking officers are not scheduled to work, so we don't enforce. What we did this past Easter, what we did that weekend, we, because of short notice, we still had the officers go out and just to kind of, not to enforce, but just to go out throughout the city and make sure everything's okay. But we didn't, we suspended any enforcement for that weekend.
So in a regular, and I'm sorry, maybe it wasn't clear, in a regular holiday scenario, a traditional Easter, is that like Thursday to Sunday? Is that Friday to Sunday or Monday morning at 2:00 AM? What does that look like in terms of the moratorium period?
So it's seven days, Monday through Sunday.
So that entire Easter week?
When it lands on the same weekend, yes, so.
So in this situation, if it doesn't land on the same week, I just, to be clear, are we saying we're good with it for the week of Easter as well? Or are we just saying for the weekend?
I'm, I'm comfortable for the entire week of Easter, because people come into town and, you know, they want to leave. But that's me, I propose that we give the, give the families the opportunity to have their loved ones come in and without worrying about the parking restriction.
Right, so I would just, I would propose an amendment to the motion, but just with one caveat to that, that I would also hope to forgive anyone that was cited over this time period that we're discussing because of the mixed messaging from the city that, you know, I think people believed that it was Easter and it was going to be forgiven. And if we cited people during the specified week, then I would want those fees forgiven.
Was anyone cited?
Not that we're aware of, no, because we suspended it for that, for that weekend.
Okay.
Well, the weekend, but we're saying the week.
Yes, we only suspended it for the weekend, not the week leading up to it. However, if that's an issue of concern, then we can certainly look into it and issue those waivers or draw the citations, if that's what the council desires.
Yeah, so I mean, my, my understanding then is, what we're talking about is the week of Easter leading into it would be the traditional week that we would be doing the moratorium, just like with spring break. So that, to me, would be Sunday to, Sunday to Sunday, I guess, or however you look at that, that if anybody was cited during that week.
You'd start citing the following Monday morning.
Yeah.
You know, I, I kind of mentioned this to Brad a little earlier, and I'm not sure that I articulated it the right way, but I know that this was, this language is embedded into our ordinance. But is there a way that the week prior to these holidays, that we can put something on the website that says, you know, that we're not enforcing, you know, parking restrictions during this period of time?
We usually do, we, we put it on.
More of a refresher, you know, to point it, because a lot of people don't think about it until all of a sudden it's here.
Yeah, we always do. For these three holidays, we put it on the city's website and also on the city's social media platforms.
Mayor, mayor and council, just to, so I want to make sure I have what Council Vienna is talking about. I get the week, the week of spring break and the week, full week, seven days of Easter week. But you're, you mentioned something about refunding. week, but you're, you mentioned something about refunding or writing off any citations that were given that full week before Easter. We didn't enforce the weekend of Easter, but if I heard you, it was if anybody comes to challenge or if there are any citations written that Monday to the Friday when we stopped before Easter, you would like those sites to be voided.
I think it's only fair that if the intent, and this is why even when I talked to you about it when we were going through this, is my understanding was that, when the council discussed this, the spirit of it was for that time period to have the moratorium. The splitting of that, however that fell, which sounds like it wasn't our doing, that might have been done by the district and how they did that, that is not, from my perspective, like an issue for a resident. Like, the messaging on the website was pretty clear, spring break slash Easter. So if I'm a resident, which I am and I'm supposed to represent as well, then I don't think it's unreasonable for a resident to have assumed that when they're there parking, that they would not be subject to that during that time. So if we're saying that the standard handling, which is why I asked that question, would be Sunday to Sunday, if that's what we traditionally do, then yes, I think that we should go back Sunday to Sunday, identify any citations that were issued, and void them or refund them, because I think that's the right thing to do.
Is that the direction, that, that's the motion, included in the motion, so I'll-
Yes.
Understand it now.
I support that.
Yeah, thank you.
Do we need a, that, that part of the motion covers, your motion covers it, or is that its consensus?
I was also a little unclear on whether the motion is including the week leading up to Easter from now on? It's going to be the moratorium on the parking restriction?
We're actually, but, but the way I understand it is, it's going to be retroactive to the week prior to Easter, this, this, this period of time.
That's for this year, but I'm talking about an ongoing basis.
Yes, I believe as an ongoing basis, we want to make sure that we suspend parking enforcement, spring break and Easter. And if they're split, it means it's two different things.
Right, and if they're together, then it would be one.
Which, which spring break is that going to be, though? Is it going to be Benita's spring bake, break?
We normally do Benita Unified's spring break, and it's depending on the solstice, when Easter is, and then with schools, you can't push spring break too far because you have state testing, so that's kind of why this ends up happening. And again, I mean, my kids are, how old are they? Thirteen and fourteen. This is the first time it's ever happened since my kids have been in school, but I know it is going to happen next year, because spring break next year is March 30th through the 3rd, then Easter is the 5th, so it's not as crazy as it happened this year.
So whatever San Dimas High School does, I would say that's what we follow.
So if I can just summarize, so everybody's clear, moving forward, we are going to potentially have two seven-day periods. If spring break, we're going to, we're going to look at the Benita Unified spring break, that's seven days. If Easter falls in that seven days, then we wouldn't have a second week of no enforcement. If Easter is on a different week, then that seven days, we will not be enforced. And so potentially two full seven-day periods will not be enforced. One, if it falls within the Easter-spring break. Retro, from what we just had, we're going to look at any citations that were given that Monday up till the Saturday, because we didn't, we didn't cite Friday and Saturday, or up till Friday, we didn't cite Friday, Saturday, and, and void those citations or refund those citations.
Do we have any idea how many of those citations we actually did that week?
One is one too many, Mayor.
Wouldn't know, but we can look into it.
I can't imagine, it's a whole lot, right?
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries four zero. Okay, we're going to move on to a public hearing. An introduction of ordinance 1324, amending the city's San Dimas municipal code as necessary to eliminate development plan and review board. Staff?
Good evening, Mayor and council members. In Ju, in July of 2023, the city council initiated a municipal code text amendment to eliminate and transfer the development plan review board, also known as DPRB, authority to other bodies, review bodies, in order to make the code more functional, clear, and user-friendly for residents, contractors, and staff. The decision to delete the DPRB was also consistent with one of the recommendations from the development process performance audit that was completed in 2023. Based on the consultant's assessment and analysis, they recommended that the city council's staff reallocate DPRB's decision authority to either the director, planning staff, or planning commission, with larger, larger technical decisions delegated by, to staff, and more complex decisions delegated to the planning commission. On February 20th of this year, planning commission heard MCTA 24-11 to eliminate DPRB. They also recommended approval of the municipal text amendment to the city council with three modifications, and also recommended a study, a joint study session with the city council to discuss the proposed changes. A study session was conducted on April 8th with the planning commission and city council. And at that meeting, council discussed all the recommendations, or most of the recommendations of the municipal text amendment, and also reviewed the three items that the planning commission had recommended for changes. With that, the council made the decision to keep the director as a review authority for new single-family residents, also make the planning commission the permit license hearing board, and three, to keep the director the review authority for non-residential historic buildings and residential historic buildings. Those changes are made in today's ordinance. With that, staff recommends, and the planning commission recommends, that the city council introduce ordinance 1324, approving municipal code text amendment 243, amending the code as necessary to eliminate the development plan review board. And that concludes tonight's presentation.
This is a public hearing, so I'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in favor or opposing, opposition of this? Bob? Only because I thought you raised your hand. Okay. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Council, questions?
I don't have any questions, I just, I'll just make a comment that, you know, this, this has been in process for some time, and I just want to thank the planning commission and the planning commissioners that brought a number of pieces of this to, to the forefront, to the council, starting probably about two, two and a half years ago. And in all of this, really aimed at improving efficiency within the city, as well as looking at where we are at currently in terms of process and legislation, and looking at something that I think served its time and place in the history of our city during a time of its development. Today, we're, we're in a different place, and with infill projects and byright projects and so many other things going on, I think that this really does a couple of things, but mostly allows us to continue to have well-thought-out and thoughtful projects with as much involvement as legally possible by the city and the planning commission and the council, but also streams, streamlines that process. As obviously, as we've heard, there continues to be escalating costs for everybody. That includes developers, that includes the city and the staff time, you know, and all those things that sometimes we don't really think about, but there are, there are numbers associated with it. So with that, I just want to express my thanks to the, the staff and to the planning commission and to the council, because there's been just a lot. And, and to the people who thought about DPRB from the very beginning, I think I'd be remiss not to acknowledge the fact that, you know, DPRB has resulted in thoughtful projects that I think helped shape this community for a very, 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 very long time. And I think we wouldn't be here with the San Dimas that we know if it wasn't for what that process did. But I think there was enough consideration given to this that we're not going to lose anything in what we're doing here, I think we're only going to gain. So, thank you.
Any further?
I have very similar comments, it's as if we are on the exact same page here. DPRB helped to create, you know, really great, solid, better standards within our community. By going through that exercise, I think we're at a time now where those standards can be implemented by our community development director, staff, the planning commission, and I don't think that we're sacrificing any sort of development standard or integrity. I think that we're at a great place where if we can help to control that timeline a little bit for people, because we tend to think that these are bigwigs going and making these big developments, and sometimes it's just your average neighbor that's building a home or adding on, and if we can go ahead and not have to increase the amount of time by two months for them to get a project done, time is money, I think it's the responsible thing to do. So, and I haven't been here the entire time that this process has been going on, but when I got here, I was so well-informed by staff, thank you very, very much, and I think this is the appropriate thing to do at this time.
I'll just say that when I was campaigning the first time, I had no idea what I had coming to me, which was being bombarded with requests for efficiency and streamlining processes in the city. And I think this is, is indeed something that we've been talking about for a very long time, and I think this has required a significant amount of effort, both on staff's part, thank you very much for that, and the, the planning commission as well. And we have an excellent planning commission, I think they're up to the task to take on some, many of the roles of the DPRB, and keep our standards high in the city. So I think it'll be a good thing, it should, shouldn't change much as we drive down the street, but it should make the lives of people that are trying to develop in the city and do good things here a little bit easier.
Thank you. I, I just wanted to say, having been the, probably the only one on this council that has served not only as the, on the planning commission for years, as well as being a part of the DPRB for equally as many years, this was a discussion that came about probably 15 years ago, and there was a lot of discussion about it. And as time progressed, we started to realize that there was a little repetition of things, and people who wanted to get, get things done, had to go through a process, and it, it had just really become cumbersome, where you could have lots of, lots of stuff going on, so it'd be nothing to apply, to make an application, and your application be put off for weeks. And then one thing, you'd come, go to commission, talk about it, then all of a sudden, somebody to have another question, and if you're trying to build a house, or build a patio, or build something, you could be, you know, weeks or months in, into this process. And if you wanted to build a development, it even got more, more cumbersome. So when the idea started festering around, maybe we should incorporate this between the planning commission and, it became reasonable, and the staff started looking at it, and they started coming up with, you know, throwing out the alternatives, and everyone who actually sat down and talked about it thought this would be reasonable to do this. And it depends on where we got lucky, as we have, and we've had for years and years and years, an outstanding planning commission. So these people are knowledgeable, we've now been able to move them to the next level, we've actually given our, our community development director more authority to make some of these decisions, like right in, in his, his office. And so what we wanted to do is, I think, whoever mentioned it, efficiency, and, and this seems like the most practical way of doing it. It doesn't mean that at the end of the day, we, we can't correct the situation and go forward with it, just to make it better, but I'm, I'm very glad that we finally got this in front of us to make a final decision and move on. So at this point in time, I will entertain a motion to adopt the, the ordinance.
Mayor, we need to read the ordinance by title.
I'm sorry?
We need to read the ordinance by title.
If you don't mind, please.
Ordinance 1324. An ordinance of the city council of the city of San Dimas, County of Los Angeles, California, approving municipal code text amendment 24-11, a request to amend the city of San Dimas municipal code, title 18, as necessary to eliminate the development plan review board.
I move to introduce ordinance 1324.
Second.
Any further discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries four zero. Planning commission got a little more work now. Keep it around. Okay, we'll move on to oral communications. Members, members of the audience are, speakers are limited to three minutes, or may as be determined by the chair. Anyone wishing to speak? I see four community members out there. Anyone wishing? Okay, then we'll move on. City reports, city manager.
Yes, Mayor, city council. This Saturday, May 17th, from 7:00 AM to 1:00 PM at Civic Center Park, the San Dimas Senior Citizens Club will host its annual yard sale with proceeds supporting local charities. The San Dimas Rec Center open house is scheduled for Saturday, May 24th, from 11:00 to 2:00 PM. The event will showcase available programs and services at the Rec Center, and since the city's Arbor Day that was scheduled for April 26th was canceled due to the rain, we're going to have free paper shredding, tree saplings, and mulch giveaways. Will also be offered at that Rec Center opening, open house on May 24th, while supplies last. So I don't know how much mulch we'll have, but I'm sure there'll be a lot there for the community. Summer Parks and Rec program registration opened yesterday, and classes are already filling up fast, so we encourage residents to sign up on our website as soon as possible to reserve their spot. And work, lastly, work is starting on the replacement of several streetlights in our community. The project includes new streetlights along Civic Center, along Benita Avenue, and from San Dimas Avenue to Walnut Avenue, and Iglesia Street from Benita to First Street. In total, 43 new streetlights will be installed, along with trenching over 12,000 feet of conduit and two new electrical, electrical pedestals. The project will take about 12 weeks, and the complete project represents about 1.3 million in investment in safety and infrastructure in our community. With that, that concludes my comments for tonight.
But, any comments, questions? You know, the one thing that I would like to say, Brad, it's late, not that late, but it's later, most people have already left and, and gone home, or maybe watching it on television, but I think I personally would like to hear announcements like that we're opening up the summer program and these things are coming. I'd like to hear those earlier in the evening from the pla, from the Parks and Rec people, where they give a little more detail about what programs are going to be, and maybe we could start doing something like that, and getting a little more conversation through our, through our Rec people, telling them about oncoming events and things like that. That's what I would like to see, but that's your job.
And just, just to note, Orlando Soto, who presented here tonight, was going to comment on the senior yard sale, but I told him I would take care of it during the city manager comments, so I'll have him stay next time.
Okay, thank you.
I did have one thing. I don't remember when we took coyote updates out of the city manager's regular report, but-
They're back.
Right.
They're back.
They are back, and so, you know, at some point, whether, you know, maybe next meeting or something, I just, it might be helpful maybe to have just a, a general discussion, or in fact, I can, you know, I don't, I don't really want to formalize an item, but I would just say that a general overview, or at least a couple of comments, not a full staff report on what resources are available related to this particular matter, as well as maybe like a PSA regarding rattlesnake safety might be helpful. But I've just heard a lot of comments, and these coyotes are out in full force, and I know Travis is prepared to give that staff report. So if you'd like it to be a staff report, I actually would be happy to agendize that in my next section, so you let me know. Two blinks for agendize it. Okay, I'll agendize it, thank you.
All right.
And I've lost. I have no- I have no idea what you just said.
Don't worry, I'll deal with it in the next segment. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. City Attorney?
Mayor, I do have a report tonight. The council might remember, a couple few months ago, the city council held a study session on a proposed parking management plan to deal with and handle, regulate parking in downtown area, to deal with impacts of the Gold Line Station that is in downtown and that will be opening here in the late summer. Councilmembers Vienna and Councilmember Brotakos had to recuse themselves out of an abundance of caution from that study session, because they both own property in the radius area 1,500 feet from the station and the parking lot, that the council was considering where to implement the parking management plan. And the council was deciding on that area, what parking regulations to impose. Councilmember Vienna noted, he remembered from back in 2017, when the Fair Political Practices Commission, one of our state agencies, had issued an opinion stating that he has a conflict of interest with anything having to do with the Gold Line parking lot. In that opinion from the FPPC back then, they noted that there may be, as time passes and as the parking lot for the Gold Line Station, the location for it is decided on, that it may open up an opportunity for reconsideration of whether Councilmember Vienna has a conflict. I also thought that there were a few arguments that could be made under state law for both Councilmember Brotakos and Councilmember Vienna, that they may not have a conflict to discuss the downtown parking plan. And so, the two councilmembers requested that I make a request to the State Conflicts Agency, the FPPC, for a formal written opinion on whether they have a conflict of interest. I did that, and we received on May 6th an opinion from the FPPC in writing, finding that under this one exception in state law, neither Councilmember Vienna nor Councilmember Brotakos have a conflict, and they both, from now on, can participate in the discussion of the downtown parking management plan. The official exemption that the state agency used is Regulation 18703E. For any decisions that affect residential real property encompassing more than 50 residential real properties, that establishes, amends, or eliminates ordinances that restrict on-street parking, impose traffic controls, deter vagrancy, reduce nuisance, or improve public safety, those kind of regulations fall within this exemption, and the state agency found that both Councilmember Vienna and Brotakos' properties fall within this exemption. So, from now on, those two councilmembers will be able to participate. They won't need to recuse themselves anymore. And I believe staff is planning to hold the next study session on this parking plan at the next council meeting. So, that is good news. I just wanted to report on that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. And that concludes my city attorney report.
Any questions, the city attorney? Okay, members of the city council, councilmembers reports on meetings attended at the expense of the local agency? Anyone? Okay. City council requests for future items, for comments? Councilman Weber?
Not much. I will say, though, that it's very rare for the city attorney to give us good news. That's great. I actually just wanted to point that out, that normally you're the bearer of bad news. So, today, it's a little different. So, I like that. I did want to say to city staff that the Arbor Day celebration, I got significant feedback about the postponing of that. So, I'm very glad to hear that it's been postponed to the 24th. I had no idea that Arbor Day was so beloved in San Dimas. Some very close friends of mine even called me and were wondering what was going to happen with the Arbor Day celebration. But I'm glad to hear that it was postponed, and I'll pass that information along. And they can take in the Rec Center as well, the same day. So, good news. But that is all the comments that I have for tonight. I promised to keep it short, and I hopefully did.
Rachel?
I wanted to let everyone know that I attended the Foothill Gold Line meeting this past week. There has been a change in the date of the station dedication. Please keep in mind, this is still a moving target. I thought when I told you guys last time that it was June 6th, that was solid. It is now scheduled for June 7th, that's a Saturday, at 10 o'clock. But of course, you know, keep in tune with our social medias, our website. We will definitely let you guys know, as we know, when that's scheduled for. And again, operations, it's also a moving target set by Metro, but they're looking at July, August. I was able to go to the post office on Saturday and help out with their Stamp Out Hunger Food Drive. I was so impressed by our community. I cannot tell you, the mayor was there with me, and there was so much food, and I didn't know that I was going there to work. And I worked. I went home, and I had to take a break later. That was a lot of food, and they put in a lot of work getting that done. And I was impressed, too, that they say that this food covers from when they run out of all the food from Christmas and Thanksgiving. You know, there's nothing left, and this food will take us into that next holiday season. So, it's incredible. Was also able to stop by the San Dimas PTSA Ninth Annual Car Show. Great job to the people that put that on. It was a hot day, and people were still there in great numbers, and there were some beautiful cars. And then, you know, for the Recreation Open House on May 24th, I encourage people to go. You know, we've heard a lot of people coming and speaking of the Rec Center, so I'd love to listen to what everyone has to say, and, you know, tour it myself, and listen to all the wonderful programs, get your membership. You know, the first way that we can support things is to show up, so I look forward to seeing people on that day.
Ryan?
Short? Thank you, Mayor. Couple things. I had the distinct honor to attend the San Gabriel Valley Vector and Mosquito Control District meeting this last Friday. And, you know, the one theme, I think, that we can all see that continues is just the escalating cost of doing business for government. I laugh, because I think back to when Mayor Morris was here, and I'd sit in the chambers as a member of the public, and I would just constantly hear, "Revenues are flat, blah, blah, blah." And you just, you know, you sit there, and you hear it, and you hear it, and you hear it. And I mean, it's a serious thing. Like, I mean, it really is becoming more and more problematic that government agencies are not seeing the revenues that they need to be able to keep up with escalating costs. And so, unfortunately, you know, I don't want to break bad news, but it's a public meeting there anyhow, is that they also are looking at Prop 218-related type of activities related to escalating costs that could result in some higher fees on your property tax related to vector control. So, that's the buzz about that, but I will tell you that it is a very serious thing. So, you know, I just, you know, from a personal perspective, you know, related to the member of the public that made comments regarding the last gentleman that spoke regarding the escalating costs, I personally have felt that, and am with many of the residents here that are very frustrated with the escalating costs. You know, I can tell you, my mom and dad live in the community in our seniors, and believe you me, I've gotten an earful regarding this particular topic, and try to direct them to the appropriate entities to be able to express your displeasure. But it is very challenging, some of these things. And as you watch and you see what's happening with just revenues in general in government, it's unfortunate, but that is where a lot of this is. And we're, I think, fortunate that we have some relatively good infrastructure that is not torn. But I think, you know, in the future, the council and the community here is going to be confronted with much greater challenges. So, hopefully, we'll see some things change, but I fear that's not going to be today. One thing I just wanted to acknowledge is, it is this weekend, coming up here, many of us, I think the entire council, and some of the city staff, will go to the annual Contract Cities Annual Seminar. I just wanted to share that it is tradition that the newest member carries the flag as we do the introduction. So, Travis will get the distinct honor to carry the city flag until there is a new member that attends this conference. That is the tradition, I think, right, guys? Yeah? Okay, that's the tradition, starting today. And so, I look forward to you representing us well and waving that flag confidently, like Rachel, I think, did last year. So, welcome. We look forward to that. The last thing is, and I would ask a member of the council to indulge me in this, and that is, as I alluded to earlier, is it is coyote pupping time, I believe, and I have seen increased community complaints regarding this. I think it's probably productive to have a staff member of Brad's choosing be able to provide an update regarding the coyote catcher, if that's even still catching anything. And also, just a general PSA regarding, you know, I think we have the coyote whistle still, I think, sitting at the front counter. I think all of those PSA-related type of things are productive for people to understand the resources. And I also think a discussion, if there's been any activity regarding the coyote management plan, and maybe an update on where we're at with the coyote management plan, and if we've seen it being effective. So, I don't know if anyone else is interested in that, but I would...
Yeah, that's fine.
Yep, okay, cool. Travis, you're tagged in. Look forward to hearing your presentation.
Don't worry, Brad knows all the information.
Right. He might watch a few meetings. Thank you.
Well, once again, I'll say the same thing. It's always nice to be last, because everything's already been said. But just to repeat a couple of things, that we did attend the Teacher of the Year Ceremony last week. The district decided to combine both Laverne and San Dimas, and so the entire school district was at the Performing Arts Center, and they made the award ceremonies, but they also included the six schools that are, you know, a part of, even though they're not a part of our district, we all count them Canyon View and the other schools that are local, Old Name of Mary. And it was good, it was a good event that recognized the people who help our students become, you know, individuals that go off to college, get an education, and many of them come back to our school district with the opportunity to teach our younger students. And I think it was very good. Also, had the opportunity, along with Rachel, to attend Lone Hills Eighth Grade Award Ceremony, of which they had 151 students, of half, over half of their eighth grade class, who were absolutely given awards for scholarship, or not scholarships, but for scholarly things. Over 151 of them had four and five awards that were given to them, and I think, I think our school district's doing very well, and I appreciate having the opportunity to be there. We talked about the post office. Our letter carriers, as we know, put out a message that said, hey, we're collecting canned goods. And when I got there, I was in shock. I thought we were going to be there for months. So, I ended up having a back problem and found a chair, and we got through it. Long story short, that we should commend our letter carriers, because they've gone forward, along with other organizations, our Rotary Club and other folks that care about those people out there who can use some substance, you know, use food, canned goods, you know, the military. There's a lot of us that are, don't realize that there are people in our community that don't have as much as others. So, I appreciate that portion of it. And then, then I got to say a little something, very, very brief, as Ryan was talking about, you know, the funding for certain governmental organizations and things like that. A little earlier tonight, we had a representative from Foothill Transportation who talked about some community meetings to discuss the current situation with Foothill Transportation. I highly recommend those folks using the bus, or Get About Program, or any of those programs that we, you know, Prop A pays for, and events like that. Go to these community meetings, wish your concerns, and take the opportunity to find out what changes are coming, because they are coming. It's just a matter of time, and it just comes down to the funding. And so, think about going to those meetings. There's one in Pomona and one in Laverne. I think she said the 21st or 20th and the 22nd. So, pick one of those meetings that are close to you, and take the opportunity to go there. All right? Probably have about two dozen other things, but I'm being, people are starting to stare at me. So, what's going to happen is, we now, we're going to, at the end of this meeting, we're going to go into a closed session with labor negotiations. Mr. City Attorney, we'd like to...
That's right, Mayor. That's pretty much good enough. We're going to go into closed session for labor negotiations under Government Code 54957.6.
Great. I'll entertain a motion to close. Any objection? See you guys in two weeks. Thank you very much for attending.